To the special Monday, September 29th edition of Planning Board. We have, as usual, this meeting will be recorded and may be broadcast and/or rebroadcast on Westford Cat. We do have a member missing. Darren isn't in. We do have a member, Joni, who is on the phone, so we'll be voting by roll call. Anything for open forum, Mr. Generals?
No, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Morissette?
No, sir.
Anybody else?
No, sir.
All right. We're going to open the first public hearing, PB 2526, Amendment to Section 3.3 Accessory Dwelling Units, Table of Distribution, Table of Accessory Use Regulation, Appendix D, Table of Parking Requirements. I'd like to start off by thanking the zoning board of appeals for their letters that are included in our packet with their recommendations, thoughts, and suggestions. So, do you want to overview? Do you want to just go jump right in?
I can give a very brief overview of the chair. So, ZBA, they weighed in on this one. They are very supportive. The one change that they requested was one that you all brought up at your last meeting as well. They concurred with that, was changing the parking requirement for a local ADU to be, instead of not more than one parking space, but to be at least one parking space. One other item that we discussed with NEMCOG, actually earlier today, they're going to make sure there's no conflict with anything under state requirements, was something that was kind of an odd reference here in 3.3.2. Item number four, it seems to be duplicative, saying the parking requirement for a local ADU. I don't know, at 1.1 was supposed to be a requirement for a protected use ADU, and one was supposed to be a local ADU, or what have you. It's kind of similarly in the notation for the change to Appendix D for park requirements. That's where we picked up the not more than one, which is kind of the typical requirement for a protected use ADU under the new state regulations. So, I can clarify more than one parking space for that. So, just to get some quick clarification on that from them before we finalize the language, along with anything you have for tonight. So, we would probably recommend keeping this public hearing open, suggest we finalize it, fine tune that one thing about parking, and then otherwise have that with your report recommendation for the next meeting.
Okay, great. Go to the board. Any comments? Bob?
Yeah, I had called about that question earlier today with Jeff and Joe. But, second question I have is, in the NEMCOG letter, in the draft for local accessory dwelling units, the first purpose is to provide small additional dwelling units to rent without adding to the number of buildings. And I was questioning if somebody were to build an additional carriage-style unit, that would be permissible as a local accessory dwelling unit. So, I'm going to recommend we drop the phrase "without adding to the number of buildings." I think it creates confusion and conflict with some potential situations, and it doesn't really add anything here. So, we need to just think about what our purpose is, but it's not that. We certainly aren't adding an additional lot, or additional owner, but we could potentially add another outdoor, if it was permitted. Jeff?
Yep. So, that is one way to approach it. I don't think it's critical either way. The other way, because Joe suggested earlier, is that you could qualify it by saying principal, and as opposed to accessory. So, you're not adding principal dwelling and principal structures.
Well, yeah. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
But, as it's written now, I think it doesn't address the situation we're dealing with. That's the only comment I have on this one. And I do agree with, you know, the recommendations from the ZBA, so that's fine.
I agree. Joni?
Can I add? I totally agree with Bob. I found that a little confusing, but I believe it can be confusing, too. So, I totally agree with what he just said.
Okay. Anything else, Joni? Anything else, Joni?
Oh, no. No, the only other thing is, I also spoke with Jeff and Joe today about the parking space issue, so I am totally in agreement with changing that language, or correcting that language, too.
Okay, great. Dylan?
No, I thought the ZBA's comments were great, and the comments that Bob and Joni had. That's fine, I'm good with them, meaning they're adjusting that dwelling unit language in either fashion. I agree.
Anybody for the audience? Right, so, motion to continue this public hearing? What time? Next meeting, I haven't written down, sorry.
October 6th.
October 6th. Want to write it up?
I'm moved that we continue PB 2526 to our October 6th meeting of the planning board, 7:00 PM, and meeting room 201 at 7:00.
Awesome. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Joni?
Aye.
I say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Just, before we go to the next one, if I could ask the board, I am so thankful that sometimes folks reach out to staff with questions, but I think it would be beneficial to the audience and to other board members if you say, okay, well, I reached out to them with a question, they answered it. Why don't we know the question, in case somebody else has that same question, right? So, we can get it out there into the public of what the questions were, and what the answers were. Now, you did a good job on this one, but I've been on other times.
So, we could, I'm certainly willing to share what the questions were, it's just I can't do that outside of public hearing, so that's why I call staff with these questions.
Well.
And Joni does the same, I know.
I think you can, well, you did do it outside of public hearing. So, I think that if you had a question, and the question was answered, I think it'd be beneficial.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I can share with you, I could certainly print it out and share it with the members during the hearing.
Right. That's exactly what he's saying.
That's what I'm saying.
So, we can work that. I can give them to the staff and let them get them to you.
I don't even think we need a formal thing. I think it just briefly, I was reading through this, I had a question of this, I asked.
Oh, okay, yeah. I think the chair is just asking all of us if we have an offline conversation with town staff when we're in public hearing to bring up what we're seeing.
That's fine. So, I mean, I submitted 17 items. And most of them were things like...
Like, for typos, I don't care about typos.
It was mostly typos.
And I'm not saying you, Bob, I'm saying the board in general.
Oh, no, no, I understand.
So, I think it's beneficial for the audience, for the other board members, I just, we all have it out in the open.
Right. That's fine.
And again, I appreciate that you do a lot of this offline, because saves time in the meeting. Okay, moving on. PB 2525 zoning, amendment to Appendix A, table of principal uses. Again, we have a letter from ZBA. Mr. Generals, do you have an overview?
Yeah, very brief. They didn't have any changes to this. They, you know, appreciate working with you all on coming up with the different uses that we would allow for a special permit. So, on this one, we'd be happy if you did find it to close the hearing tonight, so we can finalize the report recommendation for your October 6th meeting. I think Jeff might have something to add.
Yep. I just want to add that the Economic Development Committee, they actually decided to weigh in on this, and they voted 8-0-0 to take favorable recommendations for town meeting. So, zoning board and economic development.
Okay. I have one question about that, the letter you sent us regarding the Economic Development Committee.
The email.
And why is it we had 9-0-0, then we had two that were? Somebody else?
One member had to leave shortly into the meeting, so they just simply were not there.
That's fine, okay. Didn't show up as an abstention, that's why I was curious.
I thought you might raise that question, actually.
Any else, Bob? Questions?
No. I mean, this one is pretty easy, agree with what was requested by ZBA.
Yeah.
So...
I would agree with that. Joan?
I know I am great with what ZBA asked, and I'm great with the rest of it. Thank you.
Dylan?
Just one quick clarifying question. Are we adjusting to continue to have the ZBA as the special permit granting authority?
That's what they've requested, and I think they've said that they would agree with that. Would you agree with that?
I'm fine with that, yeah. I just agree with them.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I have no other questions.
Go to the public. Any comments, questions, thoughts? All right, so, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Joni?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
And I say aye. At this point, Mr. Generals, what are you looking for on this?
Let me be directed to provide your report recommendations for the next meeting on October 6th.
Clear second? Some moves?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye, Bob.
Aye.
Joni?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
And I say aye. Okay, next we have PB 2524, amendment to the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District. This is with the terrorist property.
Similarly, Mr. Chair, ZBA was happy to recommend favorable recommendation for this one. Like the concept that the Gutierrez Company proposed, I believe the EDC also voted a favorable recommendation for this one as well. There's been no changes throughout the public hearing process to what they're proposing, so.
And just if the board has any specific questions tonight, Israel Lopez from the Gutierrez Company is available by phone in case you have questions.
Great. I think it's a wonderful project, so. Uh, Bob, thoughts, comments?
No, I think this is great. I think the recommendation, the Economic Development Committee, kind of sums it up as to why it's such a good idea. It's a reduction in the size, it's contained all within that one parcel, so it doesn't increase the size of our overlay district, and it, I think it better aligns to our objectives for mixed use within a project, so. Great. All in favor of this.
Joni?
I'm great with it. I am really happy, as Bob said, to see the mixed use. I think it totally aligns with everything, so I'm very happy with it. Thank you.
Dylan?
It's an improvement. I'm good with it.
Anybody from the audience? See nothing? You got a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Joni?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
And I say aye. Can we request staff to draft a decision, and not a decision to report, and recommend a report and recommendation?
I'll second that.
Bob, say aye.
Aye.
Joni?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
And I say aye. All right. PB 2523, tiered site plan review. Mr. Generals?
Okay, so, one more here from the zoning board. They had two items. One that was brought up during your last meeting, but we had neglected to catch before, was changing one of the requirements for administrative review from restriping to reconfiguring, because if you're going to keep the same configuration, why, and just restriping it, why would we have anything? And then, the second one was, they are requesting to strike a provision that would make the planning board the special permit granting authority for either any site plan review, or then later change to major site plan review. They prefer to keep the status quo, and kind of take a lay of land and see how things kind of shake out over a couple of years' time before revisiting to see how the balance of work falls upon this board and staff. And then, perhaps revisit it, like I said, after some time has passed to see what that kind of shapes up to be.
Great. So, I'll go to the board for discussion. Bob, your thoughts on that?
Again, I'm fine with the ZBA request, and I think it was a good catch for the restriping, reconfiguring, so.
Great.
All in favor.
Joni?
I'm great with everything as well, what the ZBA recommended, and I'm happy with it. Thank you.
Dylan?
Yeah, I generally agree. No issues? Good for me.
All right. Same with me. So, anybody from the audience? Nothing. Do you want to close the public hearing on this, Joe?
Since we're going to make some tweaks to the language, we could probably keep it open, just so you see the finalized language, you know, in the event we ever miss something again. Move that we continue PB 2523 to the October 6th planning board meeting, here in meeting room 201 at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Motion, a second, all those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Joni?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
And I say aye. Okay. Something else on here? Oh, yeah. PB 250537 Powers Road, continued public hearing, ZB acquisitions for site plan review. Evening, Attorney Robbins.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, sorry. Can I turn my stuff over before here?
Jeff, you want to give us an update where we're at?
Sure. So, if you may recall, at last planning board meeting, you did direct staff to prepare some draft decisions. We have shared those drafts in advance with the applicant's team. Our consultants have had a chance to review it. There's been a lot of discussions and some back and forth, and we hope it's at least in a good place to have those conversations tonight. We're hoping to get some additional input from the board, and our consultant team, and the applicant, to see how we should better refine these draft decisions. Ideally, we get enough direction tonight so that we can move forward with those revisions, and then ultimately, we want to have it reviewed by town council and come back to this board as soon as possible.
Great. Thank you. Attorney Robbins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry about that. So, good evening. Attorney Melissa Robbins for the applicant. Also with me tonight is Nick Raman from ZOM, Brian Gudrow from Hancock and Associates, Dan LaCivita from Vanessan Associates, Nick Griffin from Cube 3, and Ian Ramey from Copley Wolf. As you stated, we're here tonight for a continued public hearing. I just want to, first of all, say your staff's amazing. I know I say it all the time, but geez, that was a lot of drafting, a lot of back and forth with the consultants, and that was a lot of work to get done in two weeks, so your staff did an amazing job. We did get a final review letter from Dodson and Flinker. I think that if you reviewed it, a lot of that information that Dylan had put in there is already incorporated into your draft decisions, mostly in the form of the MIC mod waivers. There are some conditions at the end of his letter that we didn't have any general issues with, that we just need to work on some language for revisions for the board and for the decision that the consultants can work on prior to the next meeting. So, we had no issues of concern whatsoever with Dylan's comment letter. And we'll let, I'll let Nick go through that in a moment when he goes through his responses. And I know Dylan's here, so he can speak to that as well. We also did respond to the outstanding tie-in bond letter as to stormwater. I know you probably saw a lot of material, but a lot of that was heavy engineering and drainage reports, and also an updated plan from Hancock, so Brian will go through that briefly. And also, we did prepare the rendering from the Powers Road side, from the berm side, that the board had requested at the last meeting, and I'll have Nick Griffin go through that as well. I always like to end with the pretty pictures, so I think I'll start with stormwater and let just Brian go through, quickly go through the stormwater.
Thank you. For the record, Brian Gudrow with Hancock Associates. So, we had issued a revision last week after having a conversation with Gene. There were five comments that were outstanding that we addressed, and they weren't fundamental design questions, they were supporting data, things like phosphorus, subcations describing where it went. We had clarification on groundwater mounding, and all of that has been rolled into the new plans that, and that's it. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Nick.
Thank you, Brian. For the record, again, my name is Nick Griffin at Cube 3, with the architect for the applicant. So, Joe has up this first view. We have a few views provided here from Powers Road, as Bob requested, and we discussed that last meeting, on kind of what this will look like from Powers Road. These views are here really to highlight the significance of this existing berm and our enhanced berm here as we get further down. So, this first view, the key is just out of the frame, but this is basically right in between our two entries, right where the heart of the existing berm is. So, this rendering shows that the berm is a combination of both existing plants. As anyone who's been out there at the balloon test knows, there's some significant kind of vegetation and trees and plantings that exist there today that are quite lush there as existing. And then, we have a handful of a full landscape plan that will be enhancing the berm, both in extending it north along Powers Road, but also planting in addition to the existing vegetation, and those are a combination of a number of plantings. Ian is here if we need to get into detail, but the main goal is to get kind of textures and variation, as well as year-round screening for that berm. So, again, this is the view right in the center. You can see on the far right is our bus stop there at the main entry, our northern entry. So, again, the view, and if you want to pop over to the other, so this is that same, actually, you can go to the next one. So, this is that same view we've just highlighted in yellow. You have buildings from left to right, buildings four, buildings one, and building two in the yellow, and then the two red are the outlines of the clubhouse, clubhouse A to the right and clubhouse B to the left. So, this just gives you an idea of where those sit according to the berm, as they're not visible with the plantings. So, just as you can see, the berm itself covers most of the buildings, and the plantings kind of cover the additional amount of them. So, at this location, it really shows that existing berm, you know, kind of as designed is shielding these buildings from Powers Road. If you go to the other view, back up the other one, thanks, Joe, for jumping around. This is the other view, if you, should be one more. Is it, that's, yeah, if we don't have the other view, we can go to the diagram one you have there with the dotted, we can show that one as well.
Yeah.
It's just north of this view, so if you scroll up to the other one. This is a little farther up north, we're a little closer to our entry here. You can see that bus shelter a little bit more to the right here. But, again, this shows in yellow, building four to the left, building two in this, or building one in the center, and building two to the right, as well as clubhouse A in the red. So, again, this is more where the berm is being extended and have additional proposed plantings. You'll see the sidewalk here off Powers Road, and the parking here can start to see up at the right near the entry. So, again, this just shows that the combination of the berm and the plantings just really do well of screening these buildings. The kind of frontage along Powers Road is about 1,600 feet, and 80% of that is berm. So, we have a good cover. This is kind of where the buildings are closest to the street. Our closest building is just over 400 feet, building one in the center from Powers Road. So, we wanted to kind of show where we're closest to the buildings, but, again, as you pass our north entry and go, the berm continues, and you get further and further and further away from the buildings. So, we wanted to make sure we're showing here, in between our entries, where the berm is the most closest to the buildings, and just to highlight the screening. Again, happy to answer any questions, go into any detail if anyone has any questions.
Any questions, Bob?
No.
Questions? All right. Joni can't see, so.
But, Mr. Chair, I just think, other than this, we just, a couple other pieces of homework. I think that there were some questions about the timing for easements. We have a handful of easements on the site that need to go out. We're very respectful about the fact that a lot of these have to be drafted and submitted, you know, probably along with building permit. However, we don't want anybody on the site during construction, so there'll be some, you know, back and forth here. Maybe we draft them and hold them in escrow until such time as the project is safe enough for the people to access those areas. But certainly, all of the easements on our site can be drafted prior to building permit and submitted, and then we'll figure out when they go on record and when the public has rights to it. So, I think there's a condition of approval. It says that town council will review all of these and make sure they're proper, and then we'll try to put some language in there as to timing as well. I think there was a question about, I didn't fill in the rest of the chart for the value on that mitigation. I will do that on the ones that we can put a value to. Some of them are, in fact, priceless. I mean, I can't really set a number to what easement would, the benefit to an easement for value for the town. I know the price of construction, I can tell you cost per square foot, but the actual value of the actual easement for connection, I cannot. So, I'll do my best at putting value there. I think at the last meeting, I had added on the mitigation chart for traffic mitigation, just that's the last one, I think, that there would be an additional $40,000 given for traffic mitigation for outstanding traffic over and above, you know, the 60% or 80% traffic review, should the town have a problem. But I think the way that it's drafted in the chart right now, it says that we'll do it prior to final occupancy, or if there is two years' lapse from the issuance of a most recent occupancy permit. I understand the issue is, is what if we start construction, we get 85 units done and never get to 60%, and there's a perceived traffic problem created by the project? I think the best way to handle that is actually to just change the timing for this payment and make it that time of building permit. So, we'll do the $40,000 payment at building permit, and that way, the town can hold the money right away if there's any traffic issues whatsoever before 60% occupancy, they can use it. If we get to 60, 80, and 100, and there is no issue, the town will get that as a gift for mitigation for traffic or pedestrian improvements in this area or elsewhere.
So, Mr. Chair, one of the points I made today to staff was looking at this chart where it says estimating cost, that really is just the monetary cost.
Yeah.
And when you scroll down, you will notice in there, for example, talk about the affordable units. It doesn't get into cost.
Right.
It gets in what is the value to the town in terms of the number of additional affordable units, and so, for that reason, I'm suggesting we use value instead of cost on that column. And I suggested that, using the model of the affordable housing, some of the other blank cells could be populated with a textual statement that assesses the value, such as the well-known.
Yes. I agree. I agree with Mr. Schaffer on this one, especially for the ones that I can't give a value to. I can certainly give information by why it's so beneficial.
Why, right.
So, that's, I'm happy with that change, and I can generate that information on the chart.
Yeah. Good suggestion.
Yeah, that's good. Other than that, Mr. Chair, I had no further updates, but we're happy to go through all the other questions and comments that the board may have, and go through any conditions of approval that the board may want to review.
Great. Why don't I start with Dylan? Do you have?
Sure. Yeah, so, I have Dylan Sussman from Dodson and Flinker. I submitted a memo that basically summarizes the status of all the stuff that was in our previous memos, and tried to get down on paper the conversations that I've had with the applicant's team, and also the conversations we've had in the public hearing, just to make sure everything is documented. Suggested a couple of conditions. Most of them are related to items that we couldn't fully review, because the plans are just not at that point yet. So, their condition is basically requiring that, at the time, before the building permit is issued, the plans document compliance with the standards. So, that's things like screening for mechanical equipment, or there's a requirement in the bylaw that windows meet a certain transparency standard. So, doing that, there are several of those. And then, I think the only slightly sensitive thing is there's a little bit of language difference in what's discussed, what I recommend for the massing, or slight level of additional detail for massing, than what's in the draft decision. So, I think it's just important to see if that's acceptable to everybody tonight, and make sure it's, everybody's on the same page. So, in both the draft decision and what I say, I propose that the length of a mash should not be more than 50% of the standard in the bylaw, which is 45 feet, and that the sort of offset of projections or recessions between masses is not less than the 1' 6" that's shown in the plans currently, and that the, that's about it. And just to make sure, to confirm that the applicant had said that they would provide the height difference that the bylaw requires, which is two feet.
And just to Dylan's point, that we have no issue with revising the waiver to read that way about the 30-foot, and the, I keep calling them jogs, but I know there's a better architecture.
Jog is a really great word.
Okay. And then to the two feet, we will, we will comply with that at building permit time, so we withdrew that from our request. So we're happy with your, your state of revision. We'll make sure that gets into the decision.
So let me just ask a question of Mr. Orset. So stuff that they won't, we won't see at this point stated, like the utility screening and whatnot. When will that be? At the pre-construction meeting or when plans are sent to the building inspector?
So they will prepare finalized plans that are ready for construction. Those will be submitted to the building department. It's only at that time when all those details are worked out can someone actually review it and determine compliant or not with the bylaw.
And so then that will go back to assuming our consultant to review or?
That would be my preference.
Yeah.
They're familiar with it. They could quickly review for those particular concerns. We'd be reviewing internally for a whole host of other things before the planning department could sign off on the building permit.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Chair, we've already agreed to fund the 53G for legal or other reviews necessary for our pre-construction and the pre-construction meeting. And I think the only addition that I would suggest for the pre-construction meeting is usually we don't have like a, somebody from the planning board at that pre-construction meeting. It's usually just department heads, but given this will be the first MICMO done, I think it would be great if the board wanted to appoint somebody or a couple of members to come to pre-construction just so they can see all the material.
Is there coffee?
There's coffee.
And I think the language in here allows for that right now because it's the planning department that determines who the participants will be, so.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Anything else?
That's all I have for two.
Ben?
Sure. Again, for the record, Sam Gruvio, senior traffic engineer at TEC, traffic peer review consultant for the town. Looking over each of the three different places where the condition for, but the only thing that TEC really had in terms of comments or questions on what was already drafted was having the language be the same between where they're appearing in both the documents. So whether or not, for that matter, this is kind of out of my league of whether or not they did appear in both the MICMO documents and site management documents, but we'll leave that out. But if they're going to appear in both, that's to be worded kind of exactly the same for each of the traffic related items, just so we don't run into an issue later where there's something might be, hey, this one's this, this one's this. But in general, whatever one we kind of delve into which particular one of the comments, and they were mostly the same. I think the only thing that would require at least more definition and then maybe an addition is where we, as you mentioned, we talked about, and I think Jeff Durkin brought it up for VAI, the sightline maintenance, along the site signage and those side triangles. It's not so largely written into the condition. It's there, but it's only like to say two words or three words. In retrospect, that's going to be a DOT condition anyways and the DOT permit, although we don't have that in hand yet. But something just to think about, that's also, it's not just on the town, that's DOT state highway, they're going to make new ones. But in that sense, one of the conditions that is missing is requiring that they obviously secure the permit access state highway from the state, from the DOT. They can't, you know, without it, but still, just to acknowledge that there's things that Mass DTV were requiring in their permit that are out of the town's jurisdiction. So I make sure that we, other than that, I really had no other direct comments on the conditions as were written. I, there was an idea, and this is directly from the applicant as opposed to the town or the state, the traffic monitoring program that is included in both the individual sightline review conditions and the MICMO conditions. I don't want to say the words that it might be generally what we'll call overkill, but there are certain locations that start getting branched out further from the site. And again, this is their recommendation, not necessarily the town's, that we don't necessarily need, the town doesn't necessarily need them to go in this, we get to see, as we just keep branching out further and further. But they asked to do it, so you don't have to remove it. But it was just an acknowledgement, at least from our side, that at some point, if they come back, as the applicant says, hey, you know, what we've done the first round of this, maybe we're into the second round of this, and do we really go as far? And maybe that just becomes at least part of the record that we're talking about here that there's certain things that maybe they need to go as far as they, especially when again, all these intersections at that point are DOT.
Great. Thank you. Jean?
Record Jean Christie, principal engineer, Ty and Bond for the civil engineering bureau of Dupont Hill. Late last week, we received revised response to comments and revised plans and stormwater report, went through everything, did not issue a final letter yet. Of the outstanding concerns that we had, one does require a little more information, but I'm, doesn't matter if we do a plan revision to a single detail on a single detail sheet or do it as a condition of approval. It really is more of a construction level information that I'm looking for, so I'm happy to put it to as a condition, but I'll go with whatever everybody wants to do for that.
We could, uh, pause for a sec.
Jody background?
Jody, just let me know that the call just.
You just have to repeat everything you just.
That's fine. No problem.
Hi, sorry, cut out.
Yep, nope. Thank you for letting us know right away. We appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jean.
I'll start over?
No, you don't have to start over. Jody lost a second.
Okay. So I'm happy to go either way with either a condition or approval or requesting a plan change, whatever is easiest for board, applicant, staff.
Okay.
But other than, other than that one piece, I didn't see anything in any of the drafts that I needed to talk about more. I think I hit, everything was pretty hit on the head with all of our comments and suggestions.
All right, great. I'll go to the boards with comments or questions.
Okay. Well, I've got a list here. First off, minor point, it's plural for water resource protection districts, there's two of them. So that goes throughout all of the agreements, wherever we talk about WRPDs two and three, I believe. In terms of item two in the project summary, discussing what the existing conditions are, I think historically it was mining, quarrying were the operations, but I think more accurately today, it's an earth materials, storage, handling, and processing kind of operation. So I just suggest that that be kind of incorporated into the project, into the description of the site. And that does get reflected later on in the document. It just didn't make it up into the project summary. There is item four, which is a development agreement. I'm going to suggest that just a little more detail be provided to summarize who those parties are in that development agreement. I'm not really that familiar with what that agreement is. I do know it involves Cataris. So I think we need to just be a little more complete in how we discuss that. Just for completeness in the project summary section where we discuss waivers, once we get to the waiver section, it's fine, but in the project summary section, I think it's important to specify, these are waivers from the zoning bylaw. That's not clear. It just says in section so-and-so, we don't know what that is a waiver from, whether, you know, so just get that incorporated. Where is this? So there is a, an item in here that discusses waiving requirements of section 810, 83 to allow for waivers from subdivision rules and regulations. And it discusses there that the planning board in consultation with the Department of Public Works may waiver modify. One of the things I noticed is there's absolutely no documents provided to us from the Department of Public Works. That's because they have an agent that's been doing this work, Ty and Bond. So I think we should kind of work into there a little bit of a description that, that ties together the Department of Public Works and the agent that's been representing them, because then that makes more sense when you look at all the reference documents that have been submitted by Ty and Bond satisfying this particular section. Yes, Jeff?
Yeah, just that there was, I believe, a meeting held between our consultant and the engineering department, the division of Public Works, so we should probably make reference to that meeting, and this will all make more sense.
Yeah. And if we can get any kind of a letter from Public Works or the engineer, that would tie that to this particular requirement because of all the work that Ty and Bond has done has been relative to this. But it doesn't, it's not clear that it was satisfying this requirement.
I think there is a record that the meeting happened in one of our peer reviews, at least, but we can.
Yeah, but it's hard, when I look at the document titles, I don't see any reference to the town's Department of Public Works. So just want to give credit where credit is due and tie this all together. On page 13 of 25 in the decision, I think this goes forward the other documents, there's a discussion about blocks. I think one of the things that would strengthen this discussion, because the discussion talks about sidewalks and the relationship to the blocks and the fact that these blocks are very large. I think one of the unique aspects of this project is that the pedestrian network crisscrosses these blocks. And I think discussing that strengthens this, and it kind of lessens the need for having a smaller block. And blocks become irrelevant when you have such crisscross networking of pedestrian access across the site. So I think that would be important to have in that description there when we have that discussion of blocks. Under the street discussion, I noticed that parallel parking spaces were left out. It talks about perpendicular, it talks about angular. It doesn't recognize down that main boulevard street that it's parallel parking spaces. So that, I think that was just an oversight. Minor point that shade is provided by, not with, pergolas and shade trees. On page 16 of the decision, there is a statement, no recognized invasive species will be specified. I think that it's important that no recognized invasive species will be specified or planted. And I think there also needs to be a statement in here that for any substitution of species, this will require the approval of the town. It's very easy through an oversight later in the process when some, species substitution would occur because of lack of available stock at that time, maybe because of the time of the year or because that's just not a species readily available. Would like some ability for the town to review any substitutions. They are going to participate in the review for invasive, non-invasive species initially, so need to strengthen that up.
Mr. Chair, just a quick addition to that. Maybe we can just add language that says, except for substitutions required by the conservation commission.
It's not always the conservation.
No, no, except for those, just in that language is suggested. Yeah, we'll just add that in.
Oh, yeah, I'm fine with that.
But that's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
On page 17 of the decision, there's a discussion of water and sewer disposal. It talks about the tie into the town water system, but it doesn't mention the irrigation water well that is discussed later in the agreement. And I suggest that the presence of that irrigation water system be introduced into this as well, since that is part of a water system on the site. I'm going to leave the monitoring program to my last. On page 22, item 41, it talks about these erosion controls shall be made available for emergency purposes only, and this is in reference to having additional erosion control materials available on site, such as nails, waddles, silt fence, silt socks, et cetera. I'm going to suggest that we strike the word "only." I think it does need to be available for emergency purposes, but it could also be used for other things, such as when we have a heavy water or rain event, there could be failure of some of the initially installed devices, and they can be replaced with this stock here. So I'm just going to suggest that.
So I think generally this is a condition that conservation puts in, so part of the, and this is for construction. Are you talking for them to have it at all times on site?
It just says that, yeah. And I'm saying that it should be made available for emergency purposes. I think the "only" would mean that's all it's available for, so.
I mean, my, just initially, my thoughts are that's what the stormwater management's supposed to be taking care of, right? So there shouldn't be any emergencies.
Yeah. But it's also there to replenish any damaged items that.
But so this is generally during construction? So they have required to have extra during construction in case something happens?
Yeah.
So, but you're saying after construction you want?
No, no, this is during construction.
Oh, okay.
Maybe, if I may, maybe the simplest solution is to just strike the second sentence?
That's fine.
Yeah.
No objection.
I'm fine with that. My last and final item is on page 19, is a discussion of the traffic monitoring program. I'm fine with the 60%, 80% occupation thresholds. However, I'm not comfortable if there is a significant delay between initial occupancy and when the 60% is achieved. So I think there needs to be some ability for the town to have a monitoring assessment performed. So for example, let's say we go a year and a half and we were only at 50% occupancy, but let's say that there are some perceived issues off-site. There needs to be an ability through this requirement for the town to say, yes, we should initiate a traffic monitoring assessment. But if there's no perceived issues off-site, then it would be a waste of money. So just need that ability to determine what is a reasonable amount of time before we get to 60%.
Mr. Chair, we have no objection to that. That's why I was saying we'll just change that mitigation, the $40,000 mitigation. We were going to do that at final occupancy or if there was a two-year delay. Instead, we'll give the $40,000 at building permit time to be held by the town. That way, to Bob's point, if there is any perceived issues at the town's own start, they can say that they want to do studies, so we can, well, we can make that revision and the condition, we'll make the revision to the chart. We have no objection to that.
Good. That's everything I have to say.
Awesome. Jody?
Hi, okay, so I have, I have a couple of things. I'll go over the little ones first and then I'll, like Bob, I'll have the big one or the bigger concern at the end. The first, starting the same thing Bob said in, in the decision, page 13, in the block paragraph, paragraph two, we do need to mention, I think, that street with the parallel parking means, that means street mainly because that was such a predominant thing or point of importance in, in the, the whole bylaw. That also will apply to paragraph three, the streets, and should also be in there. My last and my biggest comment is, again, related to the whole building block and the vegetation and parapet, which applies to several, you know, several paragraphs throughout the decision. I seem to recall at the last meeting, I specifically asked to see some side and back elevations of buildings, even if, you know, to me, even if it's just one, so we can get an idea. I saw that, you know, Dodson and Slenger had mentioned that we would not see, that those would be developed more and will suggest, those would be submitted at the time of building permit. I have to believe that there is some preliminary elevation at this point, and I would ask that we be able to see that before we, you know, finalize all of this, to be, just to see that we, I get, are really getting something that is in accordance with what we expected and what we envisioned and worked really hard to define in this bylaw.
I can answer that quickly, Mr. Chair.
Jody, will you hold on one second? We have an answer for that quick.
Yeah, so there are front side rear elevations, and I'm sorry, I know that there's been a lot of revisions going back and forth. I think the last revision was August 5th. Staff had asked me to send them to them earlier today, and I had sent them along, just the elevations, front side rear of the two typical buildings. They do in fact exist. They are the, probably the only colored renderings that are in the, all of the drawings. So yes, we will definitely provide those. They're in the packet, and they will be much more detailed, especially as to the utility and the rooftop amenities, once we get to building permit time, but they are in the packet, and we'll make sure you get a copy.
Okay, thank you. So we will see them before the next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah. And relative to that, Jody, I do want, I'm going to say it again, I want to see the presentation from last meeting up on the town site, and not just for myself, but I think for the residents.
Yeah.
One of the requests I'm going to talk about following this is that anything we have presented at this meeting, it should be available to the town before 4:00 PM on the day of presentation for it to be presented, because that way it can be put up on the site. I think that's only fair to the residents, that they be able to review the materials, because it's kind of hard to react, especially when you're flipping through and there's no ability to go back and see what might have been presented, so.
Sure.
It's really critical we get this material up on the town website.
We're happy to work with staff with that. I think in the past, we've kept like a Dropbox or something, just so that everything can be updated and it's project specific, so that people don't have to go through a packet and try to hunt through the 380 pages to find what they're looking for. So we're happy to do that and make sure that we have anything that we're going to present for your meeting to anybody before 4 o'clock, but we're happy to help with that.
Thank you. Continue on, Jody?
Super. And that, that answered it. I think, I think if we can get those for the next meeting, I think that would be, would be perfect. And I assume we're going to discuss more on the Dodson and Slenger as we go on, or do you want anything on that now?
I didn't hear what you said, Jody.
Oh, I said, anything on the Dodson and Slenger report, are we just?
If you want to discuss, if you have questions or thoughts, you can certainly ask now?
Okay. I just wanted to add that I do agree with a lot of their stipulations and suggestions, so things that, you know, we should definitely deal with. And, you know, the one I didn't necessarily, I want to say not necessarily agree with, but I agree with, but not in the work, the way it was worded, is the retaining laws. I think I thought last time we suggested that there's be language that any retaining law greater than five feet would be designed by, and stamped by a P. But there are other recommendations, the outdoor amenities, building entries, windows. But there are other recommendations, the outdoor amenities, building entries, windows, I definitely agree with all those. The mechanical equipment, there was a discussion on HVAC equipment being primarily on the roof, so I know there was discussion about screening, you know, if it is required by the building inspector. However, the screening for things that are on the ground, I definitely agree, we should have something on, and concur with their language on, or their suggestion on this note start.
Mr. Chair, if I may just quickly, on the retaining wall, part of that would be that I was wrong at the last meeting, Dylan was right, that the retain, there, it's not just a general retaining wall requirement, just general building code. If you go through the McMod regulations, it's actually a citation to the MCP, the Major Commercial Project Special Permit, and the MCP standards say that you may not have a retaining wall over four feet that's not landscaped or terraced. So we have to landscape or terrace any retaining wall that's over four feet, we've just agreed to do so. So if there is a retaining wall over four feet, it'll be landscaped and terraced, and it'll be, anything that you get will be stamped, so that's probably why there was a little disconnect there, because of what I had said. But Dylan was right on that one, so we'll revise accordingly.
Okay, super, super. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Dylan?
Bob and Joni covered a lot of ground. I definitely had the parallel parking on the streets, but they've both covered that. I agreed with the consultant's comments and their recommendations for additions to conditions of approval, and I don't have any further comments.
All right. Everything's been covered that I have. Let me go to the audience. Any questions, comments? If possible, if anybody's watching, this draft decision is in our packet that you can look at online. I encourage anybody to look at and read it. I would like to also acknowledge, we did get some correspondence today with some thoughts on how we could use the money differently. In my opinion, I think that it's being used appropriately, but we can certainly discuss if we want.
Did that come out to us, too?
Yeah. But again, I think that we'll never get the state to do anything along Powers Road unless we start to fund it. And I think, I'm sorry, Dylan. I think that it not only benefits the people, the new residents, but people who live in Bell Western and the people that live along the other side of Powers Road.
That was my feedback when I read this, I was like, I didn't read this as benefiting necessarily only the folks on the site, like it was the whole point, was to get people into the site to be able to use something that is in the site, so I wasn't clear if the commenter didn't understand the intention of that sidewalk.
Joni, any thoughts on that?
I totally agree that I took it that that electronic crossing would be for people not only in the area, but folks who park, because we've now created the parking spaces at Powers Road, that people can use the trails to general public, so I think it's very appropriate use of the money.
Bob, it's up there if you want to take a quick look, if you haven't read it yet.
And this will get, I mean, I'm just looking at this now, but it will get them to that portion. That was the actually intention of the $190,000 was to get them to that trail system.
Right, that was, that was, I thought it might have been a confusion on the commenter's part, not realizing we're not doing this only for the benefit of people on the site, getting off of the site, it's to allow people to go to the site to use the walking trail and other amenities.
Lauren's been vocal, so I wanted to make sure we did address her question.
Might I add something to that?
Sure.
Something that's never usually talked about, but the idea of when we build sidewalks, we can only do so much at a time, there's only so much money to go around, sidewalks are not cheap when they go over a long distance, especially if you talk about concrete five feet wide for a long, long distance. So where we get the chance to extend it to a point, hopefully the next project extends it to the next point, and then extend it to the next point. It's great when we can do projects, like when we get the first state and federal funding to do two miles in a row all at once, it's not the reality of how most of the sidewalks get built. They get built parcel by parcel and stuff like that a lot of times, because that's just all the money that's getting allocated, especially through like a town meeting process, where you only have X amount of dollars to go around, and then you're asking for coming out of the tax revenue. So when we get the chance to extend it to a certain location, you do it, because knowing that 10 years down the road, maybe you get to the next one, so...
Okay, anybody else from the public? Questions, comments, thoughts? Go back to the board, anything else you want to see in our draft decisions? Joni?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, have a good excuse, sir.
I have one more. So there's an easement to JVB Realty to the South. I think it'd be great if that was mentioned in your special permit list of benefits.
Yes, I will add that, and also to note, Dylan had noticed that we had it probably or in a not good condition because of like a retaining wall or some other, so we'll make sure that the easements in a proper location, we'll give construction easements on either side as well, so that there's enough room to construct that leadership there be. So we'll make sure we update that easement list and make that a condition.
Okay. And one other thing, Joni was mentioning the elevations, there are also some landscape exhibit drawings and landscape plans that I think I've seen, but I don't know that the board's seen, so it'd be great if the board got to see those for the next meeting as well. So they show things like the conditions where patios meet retaining walls and sidewalks and parking lot screening and those sorts of things, or set of elevations that were the basis in my review, and I'm not sure you guys have seen them.
Excellent, thank you. All right, anything else? If not, can I have a motion to continue to our October 6 meeting here at 7 o'clock, Town Hall?
So moved.
Second. All the members say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Jeanie?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
And I say aye. Thank you, everybody. See you next week, right?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and consultants.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, consultants. We'll see you again on Monday.
Okay, moving right along, we have General Counsel's PB 2529, 219 at Littleton Road, reviewing finalized preliminary subdivision draft decision.
Mr. General?
Nothing much to report here, Mr. Chair, this is very similar to the draft decisions you saw for the other two preliminary subdivisions that are to free zoning. The applicant has had an opportunity to review, didn't have any comments, so it's just for your all's review at this point.
Hey, Bob, any questions, comments, concerns?
No.
Joni?
No, nothing, thank you.
Dylan?
No.
I have none. So your motion to a few draft decision has written?
Second.
All the favor, Bob?
Aye.
Joni?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Next we have...
I'll admit that we approved the meeting minutes of July 21st, 2025.
There's, was there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Bob? Joni?
No.
Dylan?
No, they were good.
All right, we have a motion, seconds, all those in favor, well, if you're a favorite, Bob, say aye.
Aye.
Joni?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
And I say aye. Yeah, what did that say? No correspondence? Motion adjourned. Bob?
Second.
Bob, all those in favor, say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Joni?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
And I say aye.